Thank you. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the December 19th meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. The first item on our agenda for tonight is the minutes from our meeting of November 19th.
Do we have those? We should.
Yeah, there's a November 19th, right?
Yep, November 19th minutes.
I have a November 19th.
So I have one comment, which is that I was tardy, so I missed the motion to enter into executive session, but I was there for the motion to go out of executive session, and I voted aye.
So I need to add you to the going-out group.
Yeah.
Any other comments, changes? Can I have a motion to approve these, please? So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Kruger, thank you. Next item is the minutes from November 26th.
So some comments about Schreiber. I was actually not tardy at that one, so I was there. I was actually there early. I think I was one of the first ones there.
Schreiber not tardy.
Yeah. And so similarly, I voted aye to go into executive session and aye to go out. I think somebody just cut and replaced.
Unless you got there at 6:06 on Boltwood Place.
No, because I know I was one of the very first people there.
Okay. I apologize for leaving you out.
That's okay. I don't feel invisible or anything.
Any other comments or changes? Can I have a motion to approve these, please? So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Kruger, thank you. All right. Thanks, everybody. The agenda shows the minutes of December 5th, however, those are not ready yet. So we're moving on to our first public hearing. A moment. This is a SPR 2013 4/M15/477 with respect to 42 Shumway Street, brought by KH Amherst LLC. They had requested site plan review approval to create a two-family dwelling by constructing a new four-bedroom, two-story unit behind the existing house and connecting the two structures with an enclosed foyer breezeway. The applicant has requested that their application be withdrawn, so I think we're -- unless anybody has any comments about that before we move on. Do we need to have a motion allowing the withdrawal?
Yes, you do. So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. Thank you. Formalities out of the way. We will now go to our next site plan review. This is -- okay. In accordance with Mass General Laws Chapter 40A, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice has been posted in the town hall and sent to a butters. The hearing is being held to provide the opportunity for interested citizens to be informed about and to comment on this proposed site plan.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it's not quite 7:15, so...
Yeah, let's just go to the next.
It is somewhere in the world.
Five minutes.
One minute.
Okay.
Seven ten.
I would urge the board members to review the site plan review papers while we're waiting. All right. By my eyesight, it is now 7:15. The clock on the wall. This is Site Plan Review 2013 00005/M16139, 768 North Pleasant Street. Daniel Johnson for the Amherst Project requesting site plan review approval to establish a nonprofit takeout café under Section 3.330.0 of the zoning bylaw. Map 8C, parcel 10, and this is in the RN zoning district. All right. Mr. Johnson, why don't you tell us what you've got planned?
What we're proposing is a coffee shop, takeout in its style. We're going to just be serving coffee and teas. The purpose of it is to kind of encourage a community fellowship of people who are interested in doing something to end human trafficking, mainly UMass students, I see to be interested in it. The Kaifa -- or the café is nonprofit. 100% of our profits, hopefully, will go right to the cause. And the cause that we're working with is called -- it's another nonprofit organization called Jubilee Market that creates vocational centers in India where victims can be restored and rescued from the sex industry that they were trafficked into and given an opportunity to learn a new trade, start a business, things like that. So basically, the coffee shop was just a small idea about a year and a half ago that we had to just try to raise some money. We realized we wanted to put a sign out front to try to pull students into our café to be able to kind of promote it around campus, and we realized we needed a site plan approval and things like that, so. It's going to be donation-based, so when people come in, they can donate to our cause. There is no cost for the goods because we are a nonprofit religious organization, and all of our employees are going to be volunteers, so nobody's paid at all, so. That's about it. Unless anybody else questions?
I'm sure we'll have a few questions for you. Before we get to that, though, I will just go through some of the materials that we have here. The first being the report from the site visit, which took place at 9:00 AM on the At that site visit, we had two planning board members plus Chris Brestrop present, and the following were observed. This property is located near the intersection of Eastman Lane and North Pleasant Street, across the street from the Topman Gymnasium, which is on UMass campus. This neighborhood consists of single-family homes along the west side of North Pleasant Street and large university parking lots on the east side. Let's see. The homes are modest in size along North Pleasant Street. Some of them are occupied by fraternities, believing -- I believe one of those is the infamous Delta-Epsilon. And the -- there's parking lots. Let's see. It's very, very close to campus. As far as the site itself, it rises away from the street, and the entrance to the café is proposed to be around the rear of the property. The parking lot and driveway are unmarked, and some of them are surfaced with loose gravel or bare earth. There's also a fence existing towards the rear of the property and space behind the fence for one more car. There is little, if any, sight lighting on the property and no plans to add any lighting. And the house itself is built in the mid-1900s and appears to have had some recent maintenance done. And the proposed space is actually a half of the former two-car garage. That currently has a sliding glass door, which the applicant's plan to replace with French doors to eliminate the threshold and allow handicap access to the café space. And there are currently four tenants already in the building, with a sunroom on the south side of the building providing office space for the Amherst Project. We also have a development application report prepared by town staff, which has some notes on this application. The waivers requested for this are landscape plan, lighting plan, soil erosion plan, and a traffic impact statement. The applicant in their materials they submitted state that the property is already landscaped. No additional landscaping is proposed. No exterior lighting is proposed. No excavation or filling are proposed, and vehicular traffic to the site will be minimal. That's the basis for the waiver requests. We have an issue with the parking. The zoning bylaw requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit. It already contains one dwelling unit, and therefore, two parking spaces are required. Four of those spaces currently existing will be for tenants of the house, and four additional are proposed. Four standard and three compact along the south side of the driveway. That may or may not include the one behind the fence. It does not include the one behind the fence. There's also rules for parking for office space and incidental meeting space. It's not directly addressed in the zoning bylaw, but office space requires 3.3 parking spaces for every thousand square feet of gross floor area. Using this method, the bylaw would require three parking spaces for the office meeting use. Or we could look to Section 7.005, which says that we can -- for all other permitted uses, which this one doesn't fall directly into necessarily the office space category, adequate parking spaces to accommodate normal conditions. Staff proposes we can refer to either of those sections. Again, parking for the café. So we're looking -- let me just recap. I first looked at parking for the dwelling units that are already existing in the building. Next, we looked at office space parking, and now we're looking at parking for the café, so we're splitting it up into categories. There's no seating in this, so it's not clear whether we should treat it as a restaurant or a retail space. They're treated different, but under the restaurant rules, it would be about three parking spaces for that. So basically, according to the bylaw, eight spaces looks like it's not quite enough by the letter of the law under some readings of it. So we may need to do some type of waiver on that. In so considering, we may also note that there is metered parking right across the street. That's stated in the management plan, and there's a crosswalk. Two of the employees of the Amherst Project are UMass campus chaplains who have access to parking passes, allowing them to park in the metered lot. Our bylaw requires that parking spaces be paved with various materials. Loose gravel is one of those materials. Bare earth is not. We're going to need to just look at parking in more detail. We may want to require the driveway be widened. Also, we want to look at pedestrian excess turnaround space. The hours of operation -- oh, let's see. Moving on to lighting. Hours of operation for the café will be 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That, in the wintertime, is darkness, so we need to consider whether we need to require some lighting, and if there's any existing lighting, or whether we need to limit the hours to daylight hours. Erosion control clearly doesn't apply. Traffic impact statement, there's nothing more to be said than Spence said already. In the RN district, the zoning bylaw limits the size and number of signs to two signs and 12 square feet. The applicant is proposing two signs, one at the front of the property and one on the fence at the rear of the property. There's also to be another sign on a panel next to the entry door, but it won't -- it will not be clearly visible from any point off the premises. The front sign will be six square feet, and the sign on the fence, combined with that, should be less than 12. And we have received tonight a drawing of those signs. Management plan's been submitted. Sample lease has been submitted. The fire department has not weighed in on this yet. Concom doesn't apply to the site, as there's no wetlands. The engineer has no comments, and there's no proposed landscaping. But we may wish to consider requiring some type of screening. All right. At this time, I will open up to any responses from the applicant to any of the things that I brought up?
Regarding parking, first of all. We primarily see students walking. We have a large amount of people who walk right past our facility, because we have basically UMasses living all the way around us. So when we first had the idea, we didn't really anticipate having drive-in traffic, although we -- you know, once you put a sign up, I can see how, you know, there would be that kind of a thing. So regarding the parking, I guess I would ask for variance of some sort with that because of kind of what we're planning, you know, kind of a smaller scale kind of a thing. Regarding the parking space behind the fence, that was where I parked so that the people who came for the site visit would have a place to park, and we don't propose that being a parking space at all. So that was just a temporary thing, so. Let's see. Oh, regarding lighting, I would -- you know, being that this issue has come up, I would also propose changing our hours to where we're not open during evening. I think that would also help with pedestrians and traffic being on the same driveway. You know, if the sun's out, that can definitely help with awareness of pedestrians and things like that, so that's about it.
Thank you. Were there any questions for the applicant from the board? Mr. Kruger?
My question was, I'm sorry I missed the site visit, and I can see -- I think I can see from the photos in the site plan you submitted that there's an outdoor kind of deck area now, and I was wondering if, in the warmer season, warmer weather, would people take their tea and coffee outside? Do you anticipate having outdoor furniture, or are you going to use outdoor spaces as well?
Well, first of all, we don't anticipate being open during the summer because students aren't on campus. The café's going to be run by volunteer students, so our plan at this point is not to even be open during the summer. Moving in, you know, from summer to fall, it's hard to say whether people will congregate at all outside, but that was never our intention. That was an existent structure there when we got the house, so. We actually removed half the deck so that we could put in, you know, a walkway, but it's not our intention to have any seating space outside or anything like that.
Mr. Crowder?
Could you clarify whether this is going to be sales or donations, and how are you going to make it clear that it's?
We have a sign in the café that just says, "Would you consider donating to our cause?" There's no coercion. There, you know, if people come in and just don't want to donate, that's fine. There's no rules, you know. When we first thought of the idea, we wanted to just give away coffee, and, you know, because we're a ministry on campus. And when we realized that, you know, we really wanted to raise money for cause, we wanted to open up the availability for donations, so, yeah, there is no cost. There's on our donation iPad, there's a button where it just says, "Forgot my wallet," you know. They can just take their coffee and go. So that's a -- it's donation-based, so.
Mr. Rosnoy?
I believe you mentioned in addressing the lighting issue that you would rather change your hours. Right now, the application says to 6:00 PM, I believe?
Yes.
Do you want to state exactly what the hours would be, your proposed hours, and then we'll consider that that's what your application is?
Yeah, I would propose probably changing it to four. The reason why is because of the daylight issue, but the other thing is, we don't -- you know, because we're a takeout café, most people drink their coffee in the morning and early afternoon, and I could see people wanting to study and stuff with coffee in the evening, but we don't have any study space, so I think it would even be nice for our volunteers to not have to staff a empty café, so. When we picked those hours, we were just -- I mean, we'll probably start with even more limited hours than that, because we don't know what we're going to get for involvement and things like that. But, yeah, I would have no problem changing it to four o'clock.
Mr. Schreiber?
So I do have a question that could the applicant be more flexible, say, really have a time to daylight? So in other words, it'll be closed either at sunset or blank, whichever comes first? In other words, do we have to have a time specific, or can we have it to the -- based on the solar time?
Well, again, we're not open in the summer, and so that kind of helps that issue a little bit more, because we're only really open in the winter. And we're not even going to be open during the break, you know, so it's only basically the fall and the spring. So I don't know when sundown is, but whatever it would be.
So in December -- I'm trying to -- September 20th, well, September 21st and March 21st, it's a 12-hour day, so it's basically -- depends on when daylight savings time. It's basically 7:00 PM on September 21st and March 21st.
Four o'clock is always okay, though.
Four o'clock's always in the sun, yeah.
I think, though, I think Mr. Schreiber has a point, though, that we could potentially allow a little extra flexibility, especially in the fall and spring. I mean, in May, certainly, it's open much later. I mean, the sun's up much later than four o'clock. It's more like eight o'clock. I think, you know, the concerns about lighting are the only reason that we're talking about this, so I don't see any reason to lock them into four o'clock. Did you have any other questions from the board? Any questions from the -- oh, Mr. O'Keefe?
I had a question from Ms. Brestrop. I find it a little bit unusual that we're considering a use -- a principal use on this property that already has a single-family dwelling, which is another principal use. And the zoning bylaw doesn't allow us to have two principal uses on the same property unless they're clearly complementary to one another. I remember we dealt with this issue also when we considered Boltwood Place on the same property as Judy's, and the board had to consider the decision about whether those uses were complementary. So I'm wondering if you could provide some guidance on what, if anything, we need to do to deal with that issue?
My understanding is that the building commissioner, Rob Mara, looked pretty carefully at this, and he was satisfied that this would fit under the category of religious nonprofit use, and I think he was including all of the uses on the property in that determination. So he -- you know, that's my understanding. He's not here, so I can't ask him to support that, but that was my understanding.
Mr. Crowder?
I've also been in dialogue with Mr. Tucker about this issue, because it concerns me. I think that -- I question -- I question whether this is a 3.330.0 use, which reads to me as an educational institution, nonprofit, which can be religious in nature. And I was more concerned with the potential dual primary use issue when I thought that it was a retail operation, that it was attached to a house. It sounds like that's not exactly what it is, and so I'm a little bit more comfortable with the proposal now. But I still think that it's misclassified and that it's more appropriate as an accessory use or as a 3.333 use or something. And, you know, I guess I'm still hesitant about this. I'd like to know what, for instance, a secular organization that wanted to do the same thing, what use would that come under? It doesn't look like it fits under 3.330.0, and I'm not sure where it would fit. However, if this is, you know, if the entire operation, if the bedrooms and the office space is all being presented as one, in other words, if it has not yet been permitted as a religious gathering space, and that's what they're actually asking for, a religious gathering space that has an opportunity to donate, I think that's a little bit of a different thing. So we need to be clear about what exactly. So, we need to be clear about what exactly this is.
Before we get into this issue any further, I want to ask if there's anyone here from the public to speak on this. Yes, sir. Would you please come forward to the microphone, identify yourself?
My wife and I are here.
Wait till you get to the mic, and then tell us who we are.
It's for the TV.
On TV?
Yep.
My name's Alan Carpenter, I'm here with my wife. We live at number 40 Farview Way, which is one block over from North Pleasant Street. I just want to bring out a few things. Number one, the current occupancy is better than what it has been. In the past, it was student rental. Now, I know that many people are against this term, student rental, but we've had opportunities to call police, fire, and many, many times at night. This has not happened since these people moved in. But I'd like to call your attention to a few safety matters. It's a two-lane road, north and south. There's a bike lane both sides. There are sidewalks both sides. There's a parking lot on the east side, which is for commuters. That's the one you referred to as paid parking. There are two crosswalks, one directly opposite this facility. The other one is closer to the roundabout. All the signage pertains to the new roundabout. There are no, no parking signs on either side. My concern, and buyer's concern, is there are bikers, there are pedestrians, and if people are going south, and they want a cup of coffee, they may park on the sidewalk, which interferes with the bikers and the pedestrians. Students walk on this facility, on this road, from 7:00 in the morning till about 9:00 If people are going to stop temporarily and discharge people for a purchase, that's not going to work. If they have to drive in, there's no place to turn around, so they're going to back out into traffic, which is illegal. Currently, there are fi- four cars parked, excuse me, four cars parked there with no turnaround. That's it.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments, thank you. Would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, I can comment on that. I do think there's significant turnaround. We don't normally back out into traffic, because we just pull out and leave the premises. I think, I think that's even written down in the last, I don't know which one it was, but it talked about there being a roundabout or a turnaround of some sort. And, yeah, I, I would also be concerned if people were parking on the sidewalk. That begins to happen, obviously, something needs to be done about that, so.
What kind of curbing is along the road at that point?
Um, it's just a standard, a standard curb.
Is it a granite, sharp granite curb, or is it sort of a rounded type of curb?
I think it's the rounded type.
Sure, you can come on up. What's that?
He said granite.
Sharp granite, thank you, sir.
I think you can see just a portion of the curb in the last photograph, next to the sidewalk.
Oh, I didn't turn that last page. Okay, thank you. Mr. Carson? It looks, when, I'm looking at Exhibit A, which is the site plan, which shows the parking spaces, and it appears from the site plan that there is room for, these are straight-in parking spaces along the edge of the property line, and the measurements are a little hard to tell, but there does appear to be a, sort of a hammerhead at the end for the last space to back out into. The applicant has represented to us that they do have room to, to turn cars around and go forwards out onto the street. But our, we have a member of the public who says that there's not necessarily enough room to turn around in there. Would anyone who was on the site plan visit like to comment on that?
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Rosnoy?
Mr. Schreiber and I were there. I think it, it looks like it's possi- the, the four parking spaces, excuse me, that are there, are parallel to the street, perpendicular to the driveway, and it seemed that it was possible to back out and make a sort of a K-turn to resume heading out onto the street going forward, not needing to back out. I believe that's how I got out of there.
And I rode my bike, so I am not a good witness on this, but.
Did you have to back out?
So, as long as we're on the parking issue, there's a very detailed explanation on it. We, let me back up a step. We were talking about the uses before we. I, I don't know where to go with this, as far as the joint uses, because I think there's a good point, that these are two primary uses, that's what it looks like, unless they're both potentially religious, nonprofit, all one use. Ms. Bresterp?
You might want to ask the applicant if the tenants in the building are associated with the Amherst Project?
So asked.
Um, I would say a couple of them are, in that they participate in some of our things that we do. We don't have a formal membership, so, but they, they do interact with us, and they are part of our organization. Some of them are there to pay rent and to live there, and they, they do, though, all of them do believe in our cause of our cafe. They do realize that part of their rent is going towards the utilities of the cafe, and it's something that they are excited about, and really happy to be a part of. So I guess in that way, they're part of our, our organization.
But you're not managing that, that part of it. Somebody else is managing it, they're, they're renting it directly from the owner, not, not through you?
No, they're, they're renting it through us. They pay their rent to the Amherst Project.
What type of entity is the Amherst Project, exactly?
Religious 501(c)(3) nonprofit.
And, and that is actually the deeded owner of the property?
Uh, we, uh, we operate under a lease from the owner of the property.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Kruger?
Two questions. One was, who is the owner of the property, which we have asked in previous applications?
Yeah, she's, her name is on the applicant here, or the application, Linda Elgers, from Independence, Iowa.
Okay, I missed that. And then I had a kind of a, you know, a question, it might be for Ms. Bresterp, I'm wondering if we were to go ahead and grant the, the site plan approval, and your group was no longer leasing it, would, would the approval then go to a subsequent user or leasing, or would the approval end if the Amherst Project was no longer operating?
My understanding is that if the use changed, so that it was no longer a religious 501(c)(3) organization running this cafe, that the site plan review would no longer be valid. These types of organizations have an exemption under Section 3 of the Chapter 40A, and so there's very little that can be regulated about them, that's why they're all allowed by site plan review in all the zoning districts. If I could just follow up, then that would apply to the parking as well. I understand that as part of the site plan review, the planning board is allowed to make requirements about how to handle site issues. They're not allowed to say, in other words, you can't refuse to allow the use, but you can tell them how to do it with regard to sizes of things or numbers of things and that, I mean, that's, that's my understanding.
Mr. Carson?
Is, is there a reason why the three smaller parking spaces are smaller, that they're marked here as for the compact cars? You have four that seem to be normal-sized spaces on the left, and then there are three that look smaller. Is there, is there a reason why they're smaller, or they just happen to be that way?
I think the reason that they're smaller is because of the, the shrub nearest to the, nearest to the, the road.
But they could be, they could be made larger?
Yeah, they probably could. I'm not sure, our architect is the one that wrote this up, so, I don't, they could probably be made larger, but I, you couldn't add another one.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Bresterp?
Those parking spaces, those three parking spaces are actually not surfaced, they're bare earth. There is surfacing on the driveway, and there's some surfacing on those four parking spaces that are shown towards the western end, but the ones that are towards the eastern end are not surfaced, so they're really, you know, sort of ephemeral in, in a way. So you could require that they be surfaced, and then they would be real parking spaces. I think what was being indicated here is just that it would be possible to park in that location.
Okay, okay.
Yes, Ms. Ford?
So, this is for Ms. Bresterp, just clarifying that, that the use is not an issue here. Is, is this the, the 40, the Mass General laws that you're referring to, is that the Dover Amendment, is that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, then, then, then use is not an issue in this hearing? Okay, I just wanted to know.
All right. Mr. Schreiber?
Yeah, so I, I do have, you know, issues with the traffic in and out of the property. So, one is, you know, bare earth, so, on one hand, I completely understand this is a, you know, an organization that's trying to put all of its proceeds to, you know, to a cause, so, but on the other hand, we have, you know, we require everyone else to park on prepared surface, so I'm really concerned about setting a precedent in this case. The other one is, I'm worried about the, really, the size of the driveway itself, which is not, it's not dimension, but we can infer that it's probably a 10-foot-wide driveway, 10-foot-wide curb cut. So, once, so that's okay for, say, a kind of a private house, where you can predict who's coming and who's going, but in one where there's strangers coming in, you know, strangers coming in to buy their, their coffee, I worry about, you know, traffic stacking up on, which, which Pleasant is that? That's, I, I do worry about cars trying to get in, and other cars trying to get out, because there's really no passing, you know, on the, at least in the immediate vicinity of that, that sidewalk. So my inclination would be, if we're to move forward on this, is to really take the word of metered parking across the street, and really rely on that more, rather than sort of illegal, you know, substandard parking on the site. I would prefer to have moved towards the standard parking across the street, and, and have as few parking spaces as, you know, as possible on the site.
Whose reason? Mr. Carson?
Yeah, I, to go along with that, I wonder if there could be a sign at the entrance saying, "Tenant parking only," because, or, or else go into the complexity of adding more paid parking, which would be more of an expense for you. But that, that does, I, I agree with Steve, that if, if there is going to be parking, it should be done properly, or else not have it.
How does your concept work if you don't have any on-site parking?
Well, our concept was primarily people walk, walking there, on their, on their way to and from campus, so, not having parking, I don't think would be an issue, if we had a sign at the, the entrance of the, of the cafe that asked people to please park across the street at the meters. I think people who were interested in our cause and wanting to contribute wouldn't have a problem paying a quarter to park while they go in and get their coffee. So I don't think it would impact our, our organization in a negative way at all. I would like to add, though, that the dimensions, I think, of the driveway are 12 feet at the entrance of the driveway, but it tapers into nine feet. So, somebody had brought up the dimensions of the driveway, so I just wanted to put that in there.
Thank you. I'm inclined to agree with those who see on-site parking as being the solution to this. Certainly, if, if it became a priority for you to have on-site parking, there would be nothing to prevent you from coming back and saying, "We want to pave some more space" and do that. But we are allowed, and I, I don't have the exact provision, but we are allowed in considering parking to consider off-site parking that's available nearby. We've done that, did that in the Montessori School case, as I recall, and this seems like an, almost a textbook case, but. Anything else? All right, let's go through the, yes, Ms. Bresterp?
I just wanted to clarify that you would be willing to leave the four parking spaces that are already being used by the tenants.
Correct. So, oh, and were there any, was there anyone on the board who had objection to any of the waivers requested? Landscape lighting, soil erosion, or traffic impact? Hearing none. The following criteria and guidelines are used by the board in evaluating the site plan, and this is Section 11.24 of the zoning bylaw. 11.240, general, 2400, conformance with all appropriate provisions of the zoning bylaw, good, protection of town amenities and abutting properties through minimizing detrimental or offensive actions, it's acceptable, protection from detrimental site characteristics, there don't appear to be any of these things. 2403, recreational facilities and amenities is not applicable. 2410, unique historic or scenic feature is not applicable. 2411, proposed methods of refuse disposal, which we didn't discuss. What's your plan for trash?
Well, first of all, we do have trash pickup on-site currently, because of our tenants, so the trash of the cafe would be included in with that. There also would be minimal trash, trash, because we are a takeout cafe, so people aren't drinking their coffee and throwing their cups away at the cafe itself, so, I don't think there's going to be a.
Do ladies chains and stars, and then we'll start doing fun things.
I don't think there's going to be a huge trash, trash impact at all. And that's stated in our management plan as well.
Okay, forgive me for missing that. We just hadn't addressed it yet. Drainage system?
I'll go and say something.
We'll wait until Ms. Bresterp comes back.
They don't know what it is. They asked if someone in here had a computer going, but.
I do, but it's.
You're not watching anything that ma- is making that noise, so.
Um, one thing that we could do, if it persists, would be to turn the sound down in this room, and we'll all just need to talk loud enough for the people in the room to hear us, and the folks at home will still be able to hear through the microphone. Where were we?
2412?
2412, sewage disposal and water supply. The, did I read correctly, am I remembering correctly, that the engineer was fine with this project?
Yes.
Okay. Drainage, also acceptable. Landscaping is not applicable, soil erosion is not applicable. Protection of adjacent property. Protection of adjacent properties by minimizing intrusion of air and water pollution, et cetera. We have a small amount of pedestrian, well, we have pedestrian traffic coming in going. That's the only one. 2417, lighting is not proposed to change. 2418, flooding is not applicable. 2419, wetlands is not applicable. 2420 is not applicable. 2421, no changes. 2422... I would ask that you please turn down the speakers in this room while leaving the microphones on for the folks at home. Will that work? Give us a bang on the wall if that will work. Okay. All right. So I will speak loud enough so that hopefully the folks at the back can hear me. 2418, flooding is not applicable. 2419, wetlands is not applicable. 2420 is not applicable. 2421, there's no change. 2422 is not applicable. 2423, there's only one building on the site, so this is not applicable. 2424, screening for storage areas. Were there any concerns from the board about any type of screening? 2430, there's, this is, was the primary issue that we looked at tonight, which is access and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement. We found that the, there were issues with the proposed parking, and as a result, the applicant agreed to rely on metered parking across the street, which minimizes vehicular traffic through the driveway that might conflict with pedestrian movement. Ms. Ford?
Do we want to have a condition that they actually have a sign at the end of the driveway?
For tenants only? Could it be added to the existing sign?
I'd just say no parking.
I heard the applicant say...
Sorry. I heard the applicant say that he would put a sign up that directed people specifically to the paved parking across the street, which may say, "No parking and parking across the street," so that people understood where they could go.
So that was a suggestion that the sign actually say and direct potential visitors to park across the street. So we're going to probably, I would propose that we have a condition to that effect. Curb cuts 2431 is not changing. Oh, and the, oh, we'll come back to that. Parking spaces is not changing.
Bike racks?
Bike racks? Mr. O'Keefe?
I didn't see any bike racks on the site plan.
Do you have any plans for a bike rack?
We had talked about it, but we did not add it to the site plan. But we definitely can, we definitely want to, so. Could add it, easily add it to the site plan.
Given that you seem to be relying primarily on human-powered transportation to get people there, it would seem to be a good idea?
Yes. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Mr. Schreiber.
So this actually came up, right?
Yes, I was just going to comment.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, too. But the, so we couldn't fathom how, at a takeout restaurant, someone would then put that on their bike. So we don't imagine that much bike traffic. So that was the discussion that we...
I see people doing all sorts of things while they're riding their bikes, so...
A cup of coffee fits in a bottle holder.
All right. Hopefully, people will be using their reusable travel mugs and taking them with them on their bicycle.
I do that with my bicycle, so it can be done.
There you go.
I've seen people texting while they bike, so... Presumably, coffee drinking is also acceptable. So we'll put a condition that you got to have a bike rack. How many bikes do we need to specify? No, just a bike rack. 2433, access to adjoining properties is inapplicable. 2434 is inapplicable. 2435 is inapplicable. 2436 is traffic-impact, which we're going to waive. That's it. So what we have is a site plan approval with the following waivers. Landscape lighting, soil erosion, and traffic impact. Conditions, and anybody stop me or correct me if I'm wrong. We have a condition to include a bike rack at a location, at a safe location, that the closing time will be later of 4 o'clock or sunset, at the latest. Nothing prevents you from closing earlier if you should choose to. And that the sign by the street be changed to direct any potential cars to park across the street at the meters. Was there anything else? Mr. Rosnoy?
I'm not sure it's noted anywhere in your plans. The photos indicate that there's a ledge. This fits into the pedestrian access category, I think. There's a ledge that you walk through, have to step over to get into the place. And that is going to be eliminated, so it's all sidewalk level, and it will be handicap accessible?
Yes, that's all being eliminated.
I wanted to make sure that became clear on the record.
Yeah. The only reason for the ledge was that there was a deck there, so that's why the door is higher. And so the ledge was added to allow people to step into the property. But we're actually going to be bringing it back to the way it was probably originally, before they had put a deck in front of the door, so...
So that's already part of the plan. It doesn't require a condition.
Yeah, you're right. But the photos indicate something else. I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Ms. Brestrop?
Oh, I just wanted to point out that that would be a building code issue. So the building commissioner would handle that.
Okay.
And finally, I think that we found that, and we didn't actually make this finding yet, but that this is not a separate primary use, but is a, but that the whole property falls under one of these categories. 3.330.0, a nonprofit educational use or used by a religious sector denomination. Mr. Crowder?
I still have a question about that, and so I'm going to abstain from the vote, although I think the site plan is very good.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. Anyone else? Any further discussion? Could we have a motion?
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear exactly what, I'm trying to process what you just said.
I still have a question about whether 3.330.0 is the proper classification for this use. And so rather than set a precedent, I would prefer to abstain from the vote until it's clear. To me, 3.330.0 says nonprofit educational institution, educational institution, which could be owned by a religious sect. It doesn't say that it's any religious use. It just says educational use. So I don't think it belongs there. I think it belongs somewhere else. And I'm not sure it's even on this chart, but... So anyway, I feel like I'm still in dialogue with planning director and building commissioner about this, and so I'm not willing to vote on it.
Thank you, Mr....
Although I don't dispute that it's a right by use.
So, all right. Well, satisfied that it's as close as we're going to get, so that's what I'm going to go with. The zoning bylaw isn't perfect, nor will it ever be, despite our efforts. Yes, Mr. O'Keefe?
So I would just note that the other categories that it could potentially fall into, which are that of a church, which is an actual church use, or possibly 3.336.1, which is a philanthropic or charitable medical or residential facility. Both of those uses are also allowed by right through site plan review in this zoning district. So we have a representation from the building commissioner that this 3.330.0 is the most appropriate category. So I guess I'm comfortable in going along with it because even if we were to classify it differently, it would still just be a question of what the use is and not what the regulation of that use is. It would still be allowed by site plan review, so that's good enough for me to feel comfortable with it.
Me, too. But thank you for going through the other potential categories in there. Any further comments from the board? Going once? Oh, going twice. We need to close the public hearing.
Second.
Further discussion on closing the public hearing? Hearing none. Come to an immediate vote. All in favor? That's unanimous. The, was there any further comment on the site plan review itself? I had proposed the terms for a motion. Would anyone like to move it?
I move that the board approved site plan review SPR 2013-0004/M15477 for 42 Shumway Street with the conditions previously specified, along with the board's standard conditions. I'm sorry. I read, everything about the identification was incorrect.
Oh, no!
Site plan review 2013...
It's already been withdrawn.
for 768...
The goodness in me a bad news.
...North Pleasant Street for Daniel Johnson for the Amherst Project with the conditions previously specified and the board's standard conditions.
And with the waivers as noted?
And with the waivers as noted.
All right. And you second, Ms. Ford seconded? And all in favor? Proposed abstentions. One abstention. Thank you very much for coming in. I think I speak for the entire board when I say that we very much support your work against human trafficking.
Thank you.
Good luck with your endeavor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We have some old business to take care of. This is SPR 2009-0001, New England Environmental. Oh, and thanks very much to the members of the public for coming in as well. This is 15 Research Drive. We have some proposed decks to review. Is anyone here from, yeah, please?
Bill Rock. The two decks are off of the south face of the building. In the original plan, they'd been drawn in, but there were no specific...
Excuse me, folks. If you wouldn't mind taking your conversation outside so we can resume our meeting, please? You can proceed. Sorry about that.
The original plan had two landings outside the doors, but no specifications. The doors themselves, right now, are about 12 to 14 inches from the grade level. The grade outside the doors is bank-run gravel. What the proposed idea is to put two landings, one outside each of the doors, one a 12 by 12, and the other a 12 by 20 outside the door, as shown by the plans you have there. The top of these decks would be no higher than the doors, right now, are from the grade level. But the original plan called for them to be about a five-inch step from the door onto the deck, and then the deck using 2-by-eights right on grade level.
Ms. Brestrop?
I just wanted to clarify. I think Mr. Rock said 12 by 12 for the first deck, but I believe the drawing says 12 by 16.
Oh, excuse me. Right. 12 by 16 and 12 by 20.
So they're now proposed to be of even height with the doorways? Is that the...
We could make them even height with the doorway. The plan was to keep them, have still a step so that we didn't have a problem with snow backing up when you landed on the deck, backing up against the door. So to have about a five-inch step down and then an eight-inch step from the edge of the deck down to the grade.
Is there other handicap access to the building?
The front door. But we could have the decks at the level with the doorways.
I was just curious. I have no preference one way or the other.
I'm curious how this works, why you're here today. The building inspector came and discovered the seven-inch discrepancy, and...
No. The, everything got passed, but the owners, the two spaces are now occupied. And because it's a gravel backyard, they have no place to go and sit at lunchtime, put chairs out. So they were thinking of framing these two wooden structures so that way they could put chairs on a level surface rather than putting them in the gravel.
And in order to do that, you needed to come back and...
Apparently, as it turns out, yes.
So, Ms. Kruger?
I don't want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
When you brought up the accessibility question, it occurred to me, yes, there's a way into the building now through the front door. But if this is going to be an outside eating, hangout, relaxation place, if there are staff members with a...
A disability?
Disability, they would not be able to partake in the outdoor use of this. So it's going to become part of the facility's use by the staff. And that's, that would be my concern about having at least the main deck accessible. Understand the snow and whatever. But it would prohibit part of the staff from using it.
I see you nodding your head as if that's a good idea.
Well, the original plan, as I said, we had a step down. And then when we had dropped off the original application and found out that they may want to have a scope to review since the original property had been under review, that David Skewich mentioned that we might want to have this brought up to the level of the door. And we're, nobody was opposed to that, the owners or...
And so there would need to be just a step and railing?
It would just be even with the level of the doorways out.
But I'm talking about the outside edge now.
The outside edge will be just as the door is now. If you go out the back door, it's about a 12-inch drop to the grade.
Oh, I see. Any concerns from anyone about this? I think with it being, I think it's a good idea to have it flush. I like, you know, you make a good point, Ms. Kruger. Access from inside. Is Ms. Ford...
It's technically a building department issue.
Yeah, I agree.
It is, it's not working.
Yeah, it's turned off, but...
Oh, okay. So it is a building department issue ultimately, but we're just recommending that we think it's a good idea. Okay. I agree.
All right. Can we have a motion on this? I would propose a motion that approves the requested changes to the site plan with respect to the two decks, except that they're going to be, the level of the decks will be flush with the rear entrances of the building. Any further discussion?
I would tend to defer that to the, in other words, I would tend to recommend that rather than require that, because I think that there's other issues. You know, in other words, recommend that it be level, but not absolutely require it.
Because, because...
Because, because we don't have enough information.
We have a representation from the applicant that it'll work. That's good enough for me.
We've made this a priority in other reviews, where we've added that as an aspect of our review. So I feel like we have precedent. Oh, yeah. I got to project. I think we have a precedent for asking, making handicap accessibility a condition of our site plan review, because we've done it in other instances on walkways and for so. I feel comfortable actually making it a condition.
We have, there would be no issue with us having it flush or not. The exterior structure of the building is the concrete siding, so decay is not really an issue. We're not worried about water infiltration if we bring it up to that level.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. We have a motion. I can't recall if it's been seconded.
I seconded. You have the mover.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Another question, the chowster.
Another question, the chowster.
All right, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Rock, for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
For this, we are going to need the camera off in a moment, just to give you a heads up, Amherst Media. At this point, the planning board needs to adjourn its open session. Yes, Ms. Brestrop?
Sorry to interrupt you. I wanted to point out that the Atkins Farms Market people were not able to come in tonight. That was the item that was right after New England Environmental. So they were not ready to come in, and they will come in January, all right?
Thank you.
And do you want me to ask them to shut off the microphones also?
Well, we gotta wait till we actually enter a...
That's right.
...executive session, if we so choose to. At this point, the planning board needs to adjourn its open session and convene an executive session to discuss matters relating to litigation. An executive session is necessary because open discussion of these matters may have an adverse impact on the position of the town. Planning board will reconvene an open session following the executive session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this open session and to convene an executive session?
So moved.
Second.
A majority of the members must now vote in a recorded roll call vote to enter into executive session. Aye.
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 The motion to go into executive session is passed. The planning board will now convene an executive session. The board will reconvene in open meeting following this executive session. All right, by that, we have now concluded our executive session. Thanks, everyone at home, for your patience. New business, we have the signing of the Attorney General's forms for the zoning articles that passed at the Fall Special Town Meeting, Articles 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, and 17. Ms. Brestrop?
May I make a request that we cease all other business while you're signing these forms? That is a request by Sue Krasnowski, who has done this for 25 years, and she said it gets very confusing if you try to do business while you're signing the forms.
Everybody put your papers away.
I'm going to pass these around, and what does this say? These are all the forms for the six zoning amendments which the town meeting voted to adopt. Each amendment needs to be signed twice by the board, all right? So each of you have to sign each amendment twice. The chair needs to sign first for all of them.
Why don't I come down there and sit next to you?
It's a good idea.
Is this one of those that has to be black pens, by the way?
Does it matter what color pen?
I don't think, no red or green, just black or blue.
How about purple?
I have purple, too.
You have purple, too?
I have a blue.
Oh, here's a black one.
What will the viewers have to do right now?
It's not Winslow.
Not goofy, it's not.
Practicing your signature.
Yeah, exactly. I'm preparing my PVPC report. Full concentration mode.
Our televised meetings have never been quite as riveting as this.
I know.
Oh, I get to collect?
If you would return those.
If you sign it.
Two places?
If you don't remember to sign, you'll have to come back into Town Hall to sign them, so that's an incentive to sign them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I get to collect?
If you would return those.
Okay.
Yep, you sign it.
Two places?
If you don't remember to sign, you'll have to come back into Town Hall to sign them, so that's an incentive to sign them.
We've completed the signing of the Attorney's General's forms for town meeting. Do we have any topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to this meeting? How about A and Rs?
We do not have any A and Rs.
No A and Rs. Upcoming ZVA applications?
I'm not aware of any.
Perhaps 42 Shumway Street. Any upcoming site plan review or subdivision or anything?
You will be seeing a site plan review application for Bank of America. They're going to be repaving their front sidewalk and their back sidewalk. I think I might have mentioned that to you earlier, and they're going to be coming in sometime in January, probably January 16th.
What is the scope of our review on that project?
It's very limited. It's not a vertical review, it's mainly a horizontal review.
We could impose some extreme screening requirements, maybe.
Oh, and there is one other one, let me see if I can dredge it up out of my mind. And, I know, it's, the childcare center over at Wildwood School is going to have some renovations, and so that will come before you as well.
Oh, good.
And it will also go before the design review board.
Is it going to be expanding in size?
No, I think they're going to put a new roof on, and they're going to do something with their HVAC system, so those are changes to the building.
Anything else?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. How about some committee reports? PVPC, Mr. Schreiber?
PVPC met last week, so the three major areas, I think it's only three, the main event was a discussion about CPA, basically the status of the Community Preservation Act. So we were, there have been some changes which are generally for, depending on how you look at it, the better of CPA, and Amherst was apparently the leader in one of them. So you might all know that CPA is restricted to, I have to take my notes here, to the, really to preserving open space and agricultural land, to creating affordable housing units, and to creating recreation areas. So one of the restrictions...
Historic preservation.
Did I forget historic preservation? Historic preservation, I'm sorry. So one of the restrictions was that, particularly for recreation areas, it had to be new recreation areas, and in particular, it had to be land that was purchased with CPA funds. So the pot wine, apparently the pot wine fields was the precedent for this, where it was not purchased with CPA funds, but they allowed the development of that land to be used for CPA. And so really, what that precedent means is that any recreation facility can now be renovated, doesn't have to, you can use CPA funds to renovate recreation facilities rather than create new ones. So while that's good news and bad news, the good news is that most communities actually were looking for funds for that, like, most communities actually weren't in the business of trying to create new recreation areas. And the bad news is that it might actually make this of great interest to those communities that are not part of CPA, namely Boston, really the big cities, Boston, Worcester, places like that, which to date have not signed on because they haven't seen a benefit to them. So the reason that that might be good news and bad news is that there's a limited amount of matching funds. The matching fund comes from a registry of deeds surcharge, so statewide, those surcharges are all put into one pool, and that entire pool becomes the matching for all CPA projects. So the more communities that join onto us, the less matching funds there are. So that, any questions, comments about that? We talked about the top 10 resolutions for the PVPC, which have always gotten some discussion here in the planning board, have been basically released. So I have a copy of what was released, and we'll send it out to the board and discuss at our January, our January meeting. So really, the issue that we often talk about is rail, so they have a line, a couple of lines in there about supporting the inland route through Springfield, Worcester, onto Bos, well, New Haven, Springfield, Worcester, onto Boston, which is actually, you know, great for us because it makes connecting to Palmer's so much more likely. So take a look at that language, and we'll see if we want to be feisty again. So the last thing is everyone's favorite, which is zoning reform legislation in Massachusetts. So the gut feeling on the part of the PVPC, they said some, this will be the year that something happens. A bunch of Red Sox fans. So they think that the most likely provisions that would come into the zoning reform bills of 2013 would be to eliminate A and R, everybody's, to modify the zoning freeze, to introduce... Pardon me?
Meaning grandfathering?
So modify the current zoning freeze provision for proposed subdivisions, such that the freeze would commence upon the submittal of a definitive plan and ensure that it would freeze the zoning for the project only. That make sense? Introduce simplified op-in provisions, which are to craft a simplified op-in section to the zoning reform that if exercised by Massachusetts city or town, would afford the municipality a series of supplemental benefits. We'll get copies of you, for you, for all of this. Recognize modern zoning tools and techniques, for example, statutory authority for transfer of development rights, and open space residential design, form-based codes, and then simplify zoning variances. So we'll get copies of those two items, the proposed zoning reform and the top 10 resolutions.
Mr. Crowder?
So the threshold for approving zoning is not on the table?
Is not part of this? You mean that, because sometimes it's been discussed that we can move from two-thirds to majority? That was not part of what was likely to seem passing this time.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Sandy's not here to talk about CPAC, and I missed the Agricultural Commission meeting, so we're on to Transportation Plan Task Force.
There still has not been a meeting called, I guess, maybe you have more information about that?
Ms. Brestrop?
At Mr. Rosnoy's urging, I did reach out to DPW, to Guilford-Mooring, and suggested some dates for meetings, and I haven't heard back from him yet, so...
Any more on that? Redevelopment Authority, Connie?
As far as, there was a meeting while I was gone, or at least a meeting date proposed for while I was gone, and I don't, so I don't have any information to report on the redevelopment authority right now. Do you know if they went ahead and had a meeting, with some question, if people could... I haven't heard about a meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Design Review Board, Ms. Ford?
We met last week and reviewed a new proposed kiosk that's going in puffers, that's being subsidized and provided through a grant, so Dave Zomack was presenting it for the Conservation Commission. Very nice kiosk that will be for new information in the park. And the other is for, it was a new sign for a, a new cafe restaurant that's going in where, oh my gosh, what was the, the French restaurant that's moved down the street? Yeah, thank you, Shea Bear. So you're going to go into that space, kind of a neat, yeah, so a new sign, blade sign, neon, it's gonna be a cafe, it's like a, like a, a deco cafe sign, should be interesting. Looks nice.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Ms. Kruger, Housing and Sheltering Committee?
The committee met today, and I went, I attended their meeting this morning, so I brought my notes, and I know of interest to this committee is their work on the housing production plan, and they have parts of the plans as submitted by the consultants, but the consultants are still working on the strategy section, and the committee, or Nate Malloy there, staff person, anticipated that sometime in early January, they would have a draft of the full housing production plan, and there was a really good discussion, I thought a good discussion, at the Housing Committee about what the housing production plan was suggesting about the demographics, and one member said they, they really thought we should keep pursuing this kind of mixed-use, mixed-population model for village centers and different parts of town as a way to provide for the additional housing that we need, and another member said they thought the only way to really address what the demographics were showing, which is that we have a younger population under 25 and we have, it's growing, and we have a population, I forget what, over 45 that's growing, and we're shrinking in the sort of family formation age group, the sort of 25 to 45, and we're also experiencing what we've heard about on this board of student pressures being pushed out into traditional, some of the more traditional neighborhoods. So this other member said what we really needed to do was find areas where we could put 1,000 units of student housing, maybe not all in the same complex. So both of those viewpoints were expressed, and the issue about how to find appropriate locations, which is similar to what was coming up at the zoning subcommittee tonight, talked about yet, and other conversations we've had here. So I thought that was really interesting, it was an acknowledgement that we needed more housing, and not to expect realistically that UMass was going to provide the needed amount. So starting to have that conversation, I think it overlaps with some of the planning issues. mixed-population model for village centers and different parts of town as a way to provide for the additional housing that we need. And another member said they thought the only way to really address what the demographics were showing, which is that we have a younger population under 25, and we have, it's growing, and we have a population, I forget what, over 45 that's growing. And we're shrinking in the sort of family formation age group, the sort of 25 to 45. And we're also experiencing what we've heard about on this board of student pressures being pushed out into traditional, some of the more traditional neighborhoods. So this other member said what we really needed to do was find areas where we could put 1,000 units of student housing, maybe not all in the same complex. So both of those viewpoints were expressed, and the issue about how to find appropriate locations, which is similar to what was coming up at the zoning subcommittee tonight, which we talked about yet, and other conversations we've had here. So I thought that was really interesting. It was an acknowledgement that we needed more housing, and not to expect realistically that UMass was going to provide the needed amount. So starting to have that conversation, and I think it overlaps with some of the planning issues that come to this board. And then there were, there were three CPA proposals where groups had come for a recommendation from the housing committee, and representatives from Habitat for, Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity were there to speak about their proposal, which was seeking some early money for developing two units of affordable housing on the Hawthorne Farm property. And I don't think the Housing and Sheltering Committee made, took a position on the proposals, but listened to that, that took a part of the meeting. And there was a discussion about the CDBG funding, that the town had lost its eligibility for many entitlement by like, I don't know, six tenths of a point. And it didn't seem that the state was going to revisit that score and what that meant for future CDBG funding that was discussed. So the committee's really up and running and quite active and engaged. And it was a new committee a couple of months ago, but it seems like they're really doing things with housing. So I think that's it for the housing part.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Safe and healthy neighborhoods, working groups, that's Ms. Anderson's, she's not here.
Could I just comment on that?
Yes, please, Mr. O'Keefe.
So I've been following the work of this group through reports from my wife, who's also a member of the committee. So I just wanted to report that this is the group, you'll recall, that is working to develop rental registration and permitting regulations with the goal of bringing them to Springtown Meeting. So they have, another group that's just recently formed, and they have been meeting actively. They've had, I believe, three meetings over the past four weeks or so, and will continue to meet going into the new year. The next major milestone on their agenda is a meeting in January, whose date I can't recall for certain, but there will be a meeting specifically devoted to taking public input on the status of their plans at that point, sometime around mid-January. So keep your eyes peeled for that one.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe, important work indeed. I don't have any report other than to, of the chair, other than just to express my dismay and condolences about what happened down in Connecticut last week with the school shooting. I know my heart goes out to everybody down there, and, you know, I can't imagine anything more difficult. Any report from staff?
I have no report.
Is there anything further?
We did have a zoning subcommittee report, but it's not on the agenda, so maybe we can't.
You couldn't give us an update?
Do you know why? We shifted the format, and so I left it off here.
I think since it had to do with Steve.
I know, exactly. That's because I'm on the zoning subcommittee.
He's on the zoning subcommittee, so we disappeared.
I thought we were going to get away with it.
While it's fresh.
Mr. Crowder.
So tonight was the zoning forum, the semi-annual zoning forum, which we, in which we just took public comment from people. And it was, we're going to, the committee did not have a chance to reflect on the feedback that we got. We're going to do that at our next meeting and hopefully present a recommendation to the planning board about which particular zoning issues to take up for the spring. I guess I would very loosely summarize it as more of what we've been hearing for a long time. The number one priority is figuring out what to do with housing the excess student population. And, and the, which is in conflict with the desire for protecting neighborhoods and historical fabric. So, so pretty much all of the comments were variations on that theme, and there was no real new thread to pick up. So we're going to figure out what to do next. We have a list of things, I think that was, hopefully it was in your packet, a list of odds and ends and leftovers and things that are still on the agenda. We're going to go through that, go through our report that staff is going to prepare for us for, on the forum, and make a recommendation, and then have a discussion with you about what to do next.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crowder. Mr. O'Keefe?
I have a question about the status of TDR. Have you done any work at the subcommittee level on that to date?
We have not. We, we, we got a report last, not this past time, but the last time, from Chris Curtis on the status of it, and he took some feedback. But the committee has not taken it up yet. We are going to take it up as a, as a priority item at our second meeting in January. The first meeting is going to be to review the forum. Second meeting, we're going to, we're going to dedicate to TDR, see where we are with this, where we want to go with it.
I noticed a week or so ago, an item on a CONCOM agenda with a presentation of a proposed TDR bylaw to the CONCOM, and that drew my attention because I was a little bit surprised that they would be, you know, at the level of looking at something that we hadn't yet seen or discussed.
So, so I think they're looking at the same draft that PVPC prepared for us. I think it was just presented to them for their comment.
Okay, so you have seen that at the subcommittee level?
There's also. I mean, we saw the same thing, but not, not, not anymore.
There are changes that were made to that since the, I think since PVPC gave it to us, since we last saw it. I think there's, Dave Zomack has been working on it, and I'm not sure who else. But I saw a black line version for, in advance of last week's meeting. I didn't go to the meeting, and I didn't closely read that version, but. Ms. Brestrop?
I just wanted to say that the reason that the CONCOM met with Chris Curtis was mostly due to scheduling. PVPC's contract with the town ends on December 31st. So they felt very eager to get as many meetings in, as they could before that date, and they knew they wouldn't be able to meet with you. The Conservation Commission was very interested in TDR and seemed ready to make a statement of support. I felt it was premature since the planning board hadn't had an opportunity to really review the latest text and map. So we asked the CONCOM to hold their support until you had a chance to really flesh out the text, and then we would come back, or you would come back to them with something and a request for support at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. Yeah, and I think that's all, we'll get to it. All right, anything else? Going once? When's our next meeting?
January 16th.
And is there one, is there only one meeting in January, two, we're having two?
There are actually, there were three scheduled. You canceled the first one, and so now there's the 16th and the 30th.
Okay.
Of course, you could choose to cancel the 30th if there's no public hearing scheduled because you have another meeting on February 6th, which is a week later.
All right, well, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Okay, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned. Everybody have great holidays, and we'll see you next year.